Okay.
All right, we are live and ready to go. Chair Harrington.
Good morning and welcome, everyone, to the Washington County Board of Commissioners, Board of Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Yes, I can, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services District and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, June 13th, 2023. Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. So for today's agenda, we're going to make a couple of changes. Item 28 has been added since the agenda was previously published, and Agenda item number 24 will be removed from the consent agenda. We will have a new section after public hearings. We're adding an action section, and that is where the board will be hearing and discussing the approval to the bid award and authorize the execution of a contract for the supply and construction of palletized shelters. We will not be having a public hearing on that item. We will not, we will not have any audience participation. Okay. No, I'm not. I am the presiding officer. It is well within my right to make changes to the agenda. Excuse me, sheriffs, could you please remove this woman in the green shirt? We're going to take, we're going to take an intermission for the next 10 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, you are welcome to attend a public meeting. We also have public comment. We are not going to, we are not... Ladies and gentlemen. We need to take a recess. I already asked for a recess. We're going to take a recess for 10 minutes. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we are taking an intermission for 10 minutes. We will, as, we will have a public comment period if you would...
Thank you.
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 All right, welcome back, everyone. Can we quieten the audience, please? Come back to order.
Okay, welcome back from our intermission. We are going to reconvene our meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please be quiet. We require... I have no control over the volume in the room, sir. So, ladies and gentlemen, we are back from our intermission, and I'm going to try one more time in explaining how our meeting is going to go today. We do require decorum during our meetings, so there will be no further audience participation, and that includes no applause and no shouting. We are going to, as mentioned, item 28 has been added to the consent agenda. We are removing item 24 from the consent agenda to a new section called Action. We do not have public hearings on action items. We will be, and this is the point where I was cut off previously, we will be holding public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Today, given the number of people who have pre-registered, we're planning to limit that public comment period to 20 minutes, and then we will proceed with the consent agenda and the remainder of our meeting. And then we have a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. So, that is the plan for today's agenda. Clerk Moss, I'm not sure if you ever had the opportunity to go through roll call. Did we do that already?
We did do that, Madam Chair.
Okay, all righty, great. So, that brings us to the public comment period. Clerk Moss, how many people do we have signed up? And we will currently hold to two minutes. We've not made any plans to shorten that time, hence why I expanded the time for this public comment period.
Madam Chair, we have approximately 22 signed up on the C-24 topic with a couple signed up at the end. So, if we did the math, 22, it's 40.
Well, we'll see. Not everyone will need their two minutes. We have received a lot of emails and letters to date, and item 24 is on purchasing of the pallets. It is not on our shelter siting program. They are two totally different items. We do have updated information on our website, and we would invite you to take a look at that. For the Aloha Methodist Church proposed site, we do have a date set for the next community meeting. That will be on June 26th, and there's further time and scheduling information on our Washington County calendar for that. So, with that, Clerk Moss, if we could start our public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We'll call up two at a time. So, we have Mark Marsh and Joanna Wilson, the first two.
My name is Mark Marsh. One of my work responsibilities is to help public organizations respond to emergencies. On the federal level, I have done this since 2007. To do this work, I have taken...
Clock and volume.
My name is Mark Marsh. One of my responsibilities is to help public organizations respond to emergencies. On the federal level, I have done this since 2007. To do this work, I have taken multiple classes from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and I've even spent a week back at their facilities in Alabama, going through both classroom and hands-on experience. Most recently, I've been part of the COVID test and inoculation efforts which took place at the sports complex in Hillsborough, as well as other locations around the state. This effort included mobile vaccine units to reach the most vulnerable part of Oregon's population, so the emergency response would be equitable in distribution of tests and vaccines. All of FEMA's training follows the basic doctrine of the rule of law. Their curriculum stresses that convenience is not an acceptable excuse, even during a state of emergency, for not following established laws, guidelines, and procedures. The other tenet stressed is equity and inclusion, meaning responses must be nondiscriminatory during emergencies and equitable along the lines of distribution of response. In the emergency declaration which the governor issued, this concept is alluded to when it states, quote, "Housing is produced spatially in a way that is equitable," end quote. In summary, vote for equity, vote for the nondiscrimination in our county, vote to follow the guidelines in the emergency, federal emergency guidelines, and vote for the rule of law, and vote no for 24. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. My name is Joanna Wilson. I am here today because we are facing a nationwide housing crisis. But as our national government refuses to face this emergency, local leaders are left to triage the wreckage. Right now, the metro area has a fraction of the housing needed to ensure every person here has a place to simply live and exist beyond camping on our sidewalks and green spaces. With Portland's camping ban, this crisis will become even more extreme in Aloha. Those against the Safe Rest Village at Aloha UMC say that they support housing, just not next to them. On Sunday, I saw a sign saying, "No homeless in residential." I ask, where else should the county house people than in places that people live? Are these not people? No one living in Aloha had to ask permission from their future neighbors to move into the neighborhood. There is no voting on who is allowed to buy or rent a house. Heck, we have laws against shutting out categories of people precisely for property values, because we have a history of that in this country. Frankly, whatever site the county proposes, there will be people saying, "Not here." In business areas, it will be business owners. So, if not at Aloha UMC, then where? Are people without houses not people? I can't make anyone see the humanity in another person, but even if getting people off, out of your way, off of sidewalks is the only thing that matters to you, this is still the logical option. Facing this housing crisis, the county should be building tiny homes on every available site until we, as a nation, find the will to stop this hemorrhage at its source. Thank you.
Next, we have Kenneth Clivier and Dori Filman.
And Clerk Moss, who are the next two after this, so they can get ready?
Dan Sumner and Kay Rich.
Okay, please go ahead. Is somebody going to sit up here with me? No, please go ahead. Okay, I'm on my own. First of all, I'd like to say, from the last meeting, I really respected Mr. Rogers and Mr. Wiley for halting the process for a little bit. My name is Dori Feyman. I live in Aloha, and I feel a little bit nervous here. But I guess the thing that I'd like to say is, is that my neighbors and I do want to help the homeless. And, you know, this process, to me, seems like it's putting the cart before the horse, like you didn't take all the things into consideration. And you people really have tried to shut us down, and we just want to be heard. We want our questions answered. We want you to look at us as people, too. We look at the homeless as people and want to help. You know, another thing, this touches me personally, very much so. You know, I grew up in poverty. I grew up in addiction. And, you know, the way that we were taught to get out of it is get up, go to work, get a job, you know, fight for your survival. There's a lot of people out there, truly. I see young, capable men that are more than able to work, and they're not doing it. They're sitting out, panhandling, begging for money. I believe, truly, that this has been a discriminatory process here. You are placing these pot homes in a medium to our neighborhood is we are not the rich there. I don't see the pot homes going into Jackson School, or into Sherwood, or any of those areas. You have a short little area that you're working with, and I, you know, I just really find it to be not in everyone's best interest. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Kay Rich.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
I'm Kay Rich. I'm an officer at Aloha United Methodist Church. I'm Church Council Chair. I am greatly disturbed by the number of people who have a roof over their heads, who have clothes to wear and food to eat and a safe place to be, who object to people who do not have that getting it. I live down the street in Hutt Housing. If I lose that, I'm going to be a 71-year-old homeless person, and it would be my fervent hope and prayer that there would be a safe place for me to go. We understand the concerns the neighbors have, and then they're valid, and we don't have a problem with their concerns. They want answers to their questions, then they need to listen when those answers are given. At the meetings we have had, there hasn't been communication, because communication is a two-way street. One person speaks, another person listens, then the other person speaks, and the first person listens. Communication means coming to understand. It doesn't mean you have to agree. If they want answers, again, they're going to have to listen when those answers are given, because they're asking the same questions over and over. The answers have been given repeatedly. So, I am very much in support of Safe Rest Villages, wherever they may be. Not, we don't say, "Not in my backyard." We say, "Yigby, yes, in God's backyard." Thank you.
Clerk Moss, who's next?
So, second call for Dan Sumner, and then we have Bob Terry and Dylan Wyndham. Okay, next, Kiana Ober.
Right ahead, please. Just state your name and...
Okay, my name is Dylan Wyndham. I work and vote in Washington County. I just want to say that what I've prepared here is wholly inadequate, given the contempt that we've been shown so far. Since the last meeting on the 23rd of May, we've had but one short opportunity to speak to our commissioner. We were promised answers and have, to date, received no communication whatsoever. So, so far, we've been repeatedly denied a proper forum to be heard, and we've had to resort to regular public protest instead. Yet, the agenda for this meeting still states that there are no known concerns with the pallet shelter model. The agenda states that pallet shelters are being successfully used in Multnomah County, ignoring the reality of homeowners dealing with the exact situation that we fear the most: drugs, theft, noise, vandalism, refuse, and violence right at their doorstep, all within as little as one week of the shelter opening. There's no safe rest for them. We're not being taken seriously, and our concerns are not even being acknowledged. We demand to be treated as stakeholders and not as obstacles. We're not expendable, and the ends do not justify the means. We've heard repeatedly that our neighborhood was chosen because no other site was available. We reject this excuse. We demand that you put the onus of finding a suitable location on the Department of Homeless Services, rather than jump at the first opportunity presented by a handful of activists that do not represent our neighborhood. The last time we all met in this room, it was clear that Homeless Services was not only unable to provide answers to basic questions about their own project, but that they were willing to repeatedly lie to you about community engagement, excuse me. Do not fast-track the destruction... Do not fast-track the destruction of our safe community just to say you did something. Hold them accountable to do the job honestly and correctly. Until they're able to locate a site that is not in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I urge you to deny any approval of contracts related to this project. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Kiana Ober, and I live here in Aloha, and I'd like to encourage Washington County to support and approve the Safe Rest Village at Aloha United Methodist Church. There is a great need for safe places for people transitioning out of homelessness, and there's a lot of people anxious to lend a hand, and I want us to untie the hands of these helpers. Lots of people through this county program, through churches and other community organizations, are ready, prepared, and organized, and already working to make a difference. And it would be wonderful to see Washington County empower our residents with resources like this program, and let them live out their values and their faith. When we were helping a local family while they were homeless, when the shelters were full and they had to wait on the streets, and they were told by police to move from the quiet tent site they finally found, the family asked desperately, "Where can we go?" And the officers gave no answer. Washington County needs to be able to answer that question well. Safe Rest Village can be an answer to part of that question, even if it's just to open up space in current shelters for others. There is a great need that can seem overwhelming and scary at times, especially when it seems like a new or risky idea to us. But saying no, I fear, is just binding up the very willing hands of capable people in and around our community who can and should have the right to help, especially from their own property. And the need for our housing and support will not improve or go away just because of a no vote on this project. It'll just force the burden back on the shoulders of those in our area who are hurting the most, and on a system that's already overloaded, overworked, and restrained as it is. So, please support the Safe Rest Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Maz, who do we have next?
We have Mr. Terry, followed by Craig Cooper, and then on deck, Steve Park and Ayla Hoffler.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's good to see you this morning, and such a happy, good mood you are in. That just makes us all very pleased. Now, I'm here to talk about the homelessness and the situation over on 198th and 201st in particular. My first question to you is something that you could help us a lot with. You campaigned on communication and communication with the public, at least three of you did. And, you know, we don't know what's going on up there. You don't communicate with us about it. You don't communicate to us about homelessness. Let's define homelessness. That has so many different meanings to all of us as to what it is. Is that vagrancy? Is it vagrant? Or is it somebody who just don't have a home? Not only that, where did they come from? Washington County has never declared itself as a sanctuary city, or a sanctuary county. Many of our cities had. If that's the case, let the cities have them. They welcome them, so send them over there. Is there a sanctuary? Then let them be a sanctuary. The county is not. The particular issue on 198th and baseline with the Methodist Church, you know what? We went, and it cost the county at least $100,000 in the last year cleaning that space out over there at 198th and baseline, when they were living in the ditches and in the woods over there. Do we want to keep spending that kind of money and not getting anything or showing anything for it? Moving them down the street is not going to do it. The problem we had when they were living there was, our cars were broken into, our trash cans were riddled, and the vagrancy that took place in our properties over in that area is just beyond belief. It's not acceptable, and it's not Washington County. So how do you fix the, and what is your plan? Communicate with us. Tell us what is your plan, what you plan to do. Just putting, just putting little beds for people to lay in over there on the street is not the answer, and it doesn't tell us where the future's going to be. We want to know what that future is.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Who's next, Clerk Maz?
As a former county commissioner, yes, ma'am.
Clerk Maz, who's next?
Craig Cooper and Steve Park.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the public comment period, everyone gets two minutes. Mr. Terry, you've gotten your two minutes.
Yes, and as a former county commissioner, we always granted to former county commissioners and to other elected officials and other people of the community additional time that they needed to say, they had to say. Are you changing the policy now?
That is no policy here, sir.
That is a policy, and we use it for, I've been here in this county longer than you have, and I've been at this board longer than you have. So I'm telling you what it was.
Mr. Terry, that is not a policy of Washington County, nor is it...
That may not be a Catherine Harrington policy, but it was the county policy for many years. We have at least two gentlemen up there on the side who can answer that question.
He can have my time.
Clerk Maz?
Yes. Next, we have...
Clerk Maz, who is the next?
We have Craig Cooper and Steve Park.
Who are the next two?
Thank you very much for your kind time, Madam Commissioner.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if we cannot maintain decorum in our meeting room, we will be required to reconvene our meeting by Zoom. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I really don't have anything prepared today.
And your name, sir?
Craig Cooper.
Thank you.
Yes. You know, I see both sides of this compassion, or, you know, need for this sort of thing. I seen here where, like, circles are overlapping each other in a particular area, and the latest proposal shows, like, our house right in the middle of this. So how are you going to acquire the property and move these people out and make this latest proposal, which I'm, you know, right in the middle of, happen? And another question is, how many of you folks live in the backyards of any of these locations personally? Any of you? Imagine that. So we're proposing these areas that are not in your backyards, and, you know, you can live up on the hill and probably not have to worry, but, you know, for the people that are in this, right in these circles, and this is thrown in our face, we didn't vote on even getting a proposal for these areas, and they're getting so bunched together that I don't see why they can't be more spread out and share this burden with other communities.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And for the record, Mr. Cooper was referring to a map that is part of our constituent communication that was developed from a community member. Who's next, Clerk Maz?
All right, last call for Steve Park, Ayla Hoffler, and then Monica Anthony.
What's your name, sir?
Steve Parker.
Thank you.
I live on 207th, and so does Craig, and your arrow points right on our street. Now, I'm wondering if 207th is going to have your proposed pods. You're not very specific on the maps where these places are going to be put. Do you have an answer on that, where on 207th, where the arrow points to?
So, sir, this is a public comment period. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the Board of Commissioners. We will be having the next community meeting on the Aloha Methodist Church proposal on June 26th.
No, I'm not talking about the church. I'm not talking about the church. I'm talking about homeless near Safeway, homeless shelter near Safeway.
Is he talking about Forest Grove? Sir, during public comment period, we do not answer questions from the dais, but please go ahead, and you can ask those questions at community meetings. Thank you.
Chair Hanton, if I may, he's referring to this. And this is not developed by Washington County. This was developed by a community member.
Yes, this is not, this is not Washington County provided information that you're asking questions on. It's not Washington County's material.
Ah.
Okay, so...
You're, who's proposing these pods, and where are these pods going to be?
Sir, we are entertaining a proposal today to purchase sheltered pods, and through a program, we have multiple sites that we're working with groups who've identified sites. So, the Aloha United Methodist Church site is one site for a Safe Rest Village.
Yes, I understand that.
Today's action is on the contract purely to purchase a number of pods that we will need for multiple sites. The map that you are referring to is a map that someone in the community has developed. You're asking questions about this map, so a few things we're trying to get clear upon. Public comment is not an opportunity for question-and-answer periods. It is an opportunity for you to share your input with all of us on the Board of Commissioners. With regard to the proposal for a Safe Rest Village as hosted by the Aloha United Methodist Church, there is a community...
I understand what you're saying, but a lot of us are here to, to, where are these things going to be put? I understand you, the Methodist, you want, you want to put pods there, but you have arrows here for other places.
This is not...
You're not describing...
No, this is not our map. Someone else has developed this.
Whose map is it, then? And who decided to put them, the arrows, where they are?
I don't know who developed the map. I cannot speak to that someone else who did develop it, and it has not been developed by Washington County. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, but we're all here because these arrows are pointing. Who made this thing up, and where are all these pods going to be put, other than Methodist?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is not our map. We cannot speak to this map. That is all...
And you can't answer me whose map it is?
I don't know whose map it is, sir.
And why was this put on my door, saying that the pods will be in the neighborhood?
I cannot take responsibility for what other people generate and speak to, sir.
Who would I speak to to find out? Who would I speak to to find out where these other pods are going to be put in our neighborhood? Not the Methodist, but the other pods. Who can I speak to?
Sir, we have a community meeting coming up on June 26th. That will be the best forum for having a question-and-answer period for community members.
Excuse me.
People want to know.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Where is your map, what you're buying today?
We have an action item before us today to buy 60 pods, okay?
Chair Hanton, may I?
Commissioner, five. Please.
Say, where are they going?
Where are these pods going to go?
Sir?
Where's the map?
We want to hear what you have to say.
We have an action today to buy pods. The action today is not about our shelter siding program, okay? We're trying to be very clear. We do have a proposal to work with the Aloha United Methodist Church.
I understand that.
For 30 pods for a temporary Safe Rest Village for up to two years.
And you do not know who...
Temporary for two years?
What these proposed other spots on the map?
As I have been asked and have answered, I do not know who has developed this map that has these other arrows.
Who can I contact to find out who did it, or what?
I will do my best to find out how this information has been provided to us, and I understand, ladies and, ladies and gentlemen...
I put them out, a thousand of them. I walked every day and put them out. I put down those circles because that's what your group provided information to me about.
So, sir...
That's the group that said, hey, we're going to put them here.
So, Mr. Parker?
That's exactly what this board, that's exactly what the information that you published about.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen...
I'm a person, a thousand of them. I walked by a whole week and put them out. So, Captain Harrington?
Thank you.
You now know where they come out. The name is Mark Marsh, and I walked over three miles a day to do it. Would you like to have a conversation about the information that was provided to me by your staff, because that's where it came from?
And we did both of that.
We want him to do it. He wants him to do it fine.
I'm not disagreeing. I just want you to know.
Mr. Parker, your two minutes has been expired. In addition, I believe you have gotten information about who generated the map and provided it to various community members. Thank you very much.
He got that information from you people. So if he got that information, you're holding out that information from us. You're holding that, somebody in the, somewhere in your audience...
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, if, if you will not maintain decorum, then we will be in a situation where we would need to pause this meeting and reconvene this meeting in Zoom so that we can get through our business. Ma'am, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ayla Hoffler. Chair and Commissioners, we're glad that we're getting to finally speak about this proposed purchase of coffins. I am definitely opposed to this purchase, not to mention where you're putting them. I've been a nurse for 40 years. I've taken care of addicts. I've taken care of homeless people. I've had them die in my arms. I've had them withdraw in my arms. I have no prejudice against these folks in any manner. We do need to take care of our population that has nothing, but I want to speak to why they have nothing. Part of the reason is the land use laws that you implement in this county, forced upon you by Luba. This county has declared a state of emergency for homes. Well, I want to speak to the people that own one acre, five acres, 20 acres, et cetera, that aren't allowed to even build a house on their land. Imagine if you changed the land use laws, how many people that actually work hard for a living and have families, and are third and fourth generations, that would like to stay here, could build a house on their land that they either bought or inherited? And what if we build not only single-family residences, but multiple generational dwellings so that we could have our parents and our college kids have a house on our land as well? We would have a lot less people homeless, and people could afford to buy a home. The cost of a house in this county is due to the fact that you have artificially created a situation that there's no land available. This government owns 70% of this state. That's what's wrong. So 30% is left to who? Warehouse, Stimson, the county, the city? How many properties does a city own in this county? You can put these pods on your city land, in parks, in your parking lot. How about, how about the parking lot of the prison?
Thank you, ma'am.
Or the parking lot of Coffee Creek, where there's policemen to monitor the problem?
We've provided you with the two-minute public comment period. Thank you. Clerk Maz, who do we have next? Clerk Maz, who do we have next?
So, next, Madam Chair, Ms. Hoffler, thank you. Next, we have Monica Anthony and Amanda Eberard. I apologize if I mispronounced your name there. And then on deck... And then on deck, we have John Woods and Lori Snyder.
Please state your name.
Monica Anthony. So, I have six-plus years of earned practical knowledge and experience in all aspects of planning, building, and the running of safe rest villages, tiny house communities, homeless shelters, and services. I also live three blocks away from the proposed tiny house village with my family and have vested interest in the safety of my teenagers being able to bop around the neighborhood and keep their friends safe. I heard they were going to open one in my neighborhood, and my first thought was, that's great, you know? It's really great that people will have a place to live. And then life got busy, and I didn't think much about it until I saw a flyer posted with, to me, with my experience was blatant misinformed fear mongering. Because words mean something when you use them. They used the words not sober, non sobriety, which obviously was attempting to imply that our children are in danger, there's going to be drug use everywhere, when what it really means is this is not going to be a sobriety house, which is kind of to let people know that if they are in strict sobriety, like fragile recovery, that this might not be a safe place for them. But what that really looks like is getting a beer after work with your friends, maybe having a margarita at a karaoke party for your birthday. It might even mean, you know, a relapse without repercussions and losing your housing. And so, I have, I would just like to implore everyone to maybe not let their biases get in the way of something that would only be a net positive for our community. Tiny house villages statistically do not trend crime upward. In almost every case, the crime trends downward because they then have a vested interest in their community, because it's taking care of them, because it's giving them a place to belong, because it's making them people. And I don't like the words that people are using to maybe slant this in a negative way.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony. Yes, ma'am.
Um, hello, I'm Amanda Everard. You nailed it, by the way. Good job. I am a homeowner, business owner, and resident of this community. I live less than a half mile from Aloha United Methodist Church, and I fully support the county's decision to open a temporary emergency shelter at this location. Some of my neighbors disagree with me, but I believe most of their opposition is based on fear bred from stereotypes, misinformation, and prejudice. And the county should not be swayed by complaints we know to be baseless. I've read the information the county has released regarding plans for the safe rest village, and I know that you have already answered all of the questions that have been raised. The county has an ethical obligation to move forward with the intended plan to meet critical community needs by providing the shelter as soon as possible, right here in my neighborhood where a suitable space is ready and waiting. And while I do sympathize with people who are scared of change, that discomfort does not constitute a critical community need. My unhoused neighbors have the same right to live in this residential area as I do, and they should not be forced to do so without support in muddy tents by the creek or to wait for the county to find another location more convenient for those who do not want to have to see them. You have the resources, you have the space, and you have a plan, so what are you waiting for?
Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, we have John Woods and Lori Snyder, followed by James Wesgar and Shirley Spitz.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, Washington County Commissioners. My name is Lori Snyder, and I am speaking in support of purchasing pods for a safe rest village at Aloha United Methodist Church. I own a home three-tenths of a mile from this site, and I am a 62-year-old widow who lives alone. I am not at all worried about the safe rest village causing any safety issues in our neighborhood. During most of 2022, we had an encampment of people experiencing homelessness half a mile in the other direction from my house at Southwest 197th and Baseline Road. I drove past it daily and sometimes stopped to water or food for the people who lived there. I never felt afraid of them, but I did feel worried for their safety because that encampment didn't have access to clean running water, it wasn't on level ground, and when it rained, it became a slippery mud hole. When it became uninhabitable, those people had to move their tents onto the sidewalk on baseline, and that wasn't ideal for them or for pedestrians. I applaud the United Methodist Church for offering their space as an alternative for people who can't afford housing. Being houseless is exhausting and increases the chance that the people experiencing it will be victims of crime themselves. It is so important that our communities show compassion and support for those experiencing homelessness. It is a simple fact that every person on earth needs space where they can rest and sleep every single night. Why would we choose not to provide a safe place for people to meet this basic need? I'm asking that you please vote to support purchasing the pods for the safe rest village at Aloha United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Madam Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is John Woods. I ran for state delegate or state representative. I'm an alternate delegate in the ORP, and I am also Government Affairs Chair for the Washington County GOP. When you stirred up this hornet's nest, you guys got on my radar screen. We were working in the Capitol. Since the senators are gone and the representatives are done with the legislation, I am going to be here all the time to find out what's going on. Because when I looked at it, your county was in the black. And in four years, you blew through over $25 million. I want to know why the deficit is. We're going to find out what's going on. You can't blow through that money. It's like giving a credit card to a teenager and saying, have fun. We're going to look at it. We're going to find out what you've done. We're going to find out how you did it. You guys are get elected by the people. We are going to make these issues in your elections. I want to know where the money went. That is not acceptable by any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Okay, um, James Wesgar and Shirley Spitz, followed by Leann Rockwell and Emily Guthard.
Hello, I'm Shirley Spitz, and I live in Aloha. And I was researching homelessness. Homeless shelters increase crime rates. Poverty, crimes, appearance, and into 56% within 100 miles of shelters, deaths, vehicles were broken into, vandalism increased in these areas. I feel that this hasn't gone through the people. We haven't voted on this. So, where is this coming from? Who's approving this? We need to protect the people who live around these areas, and if there's going to be more increase of crimes in this area, that's not acceptable. We, the people, need to speak, be able to speak, and have the words and the say of where these pods go to. If, and if we, who approved this, anyway? We wondering who, who approved this? We are unable to stop this. We, we need to stop this because there's other ways. You guys have lots of money already in your, where are you using this money? Where's this money come from that you already have? Are you helping the, the homeless on their drug addictions? Are you helping them with their mental illness? There's a lot of things that go in, in key with, with this. And we, we need to be able to know where everything is coming from and who's paying for this. Because what's going to happen is we, the people, are going to pay for it, but we didn't vote for this. This needs to be a vote instead of you guys making decisions and, and doing this. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else on the sign-up list?
So, the last person I have on the sign-up list here is Walt Syfes. Emily, okay, yeah.
Chair Harrington and County Commissioners, my name is Emily Guthard. I live within a mile of the proposed safe rest village at Aloha United Methodist Church with my husband and two young children, and I'm here to testify in support. Homelessness is a crisis in our community which requires action. I'm here today because some people have attempted to organize the community to speak out against the proposed community. Flaring our houses, oh dear. I'm so sorry about that.
Don't worry about it.
Flaring our houses, encouraging us to be afraid of our houseless neighbors, and asking that we testify against the community. Those in opposition argue that we are being asked to bring in houseless people who are not a part of our community. However, the growing houseless population is not just a Portland problem or a city problem. It is a problem in every community. The average rent in Aloha is just as high as it is in Beaverton and Hillsborough. My young children have seen homeless camps and tents as we drive or walk by. This issue absolutely affects our community. I would much rather my children see the safe rest village to teach my children that we are a community where we work to support houseless people in stable housing and to keep them safe than to explain to my children why people are in tents. No matter where a safe rest village site is proposed, someone will not want it near their own backyard. There will never be a proposal that is unopposed, and those in opposition will always be the loudest. The houseless population is an easy population to speak against because they are the most vulnerable and much less likely to be able to speak for themselves. I ask that you vote in support of the safe rest village at Aloha United Methodist Church to protect our most vulnerable, offering stable and transitional housing that supports our community. Thank you.
Mr. Syfes? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Walt Sylphys. I am the Chair of the Trustees Committee of Aloha United Methodist Church. The Trustees Committee is charged with the maintaining and support of the physical property and buildings. I do not want trash, vagrancy, or other activities on our property. But I do not want tents and other poor housing situations to grow up around the neighborhood either. I am for the neighbors in our community and our surroundings. However, what many of them do not understand is that the, the residents of this new facility will be required to adhere to a contract which will allow them to stay in that facility as long as they do not violate those agreements, which include attending, uh, uh, resources that will help them with their addictions and help them transition into a more stable, suitable, uh, situation. I was expecting to, to talk at the five-minute after, so I was not very well-prepared. But that's where we stand.
Thank you, sir. Clerk Moss, is that everyone on this first public comment, uh, sign-up list?
Yes, that is everyone in the room, Madam Chair, and we will have the second public comment at the end of the meeting for anyone else and those online.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is today's consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of 27 items. One set of minutes. 10 items from Clean Water Services. I believe there are similarly 10 items from Support Services, one item from, two items from the Juvenile Department, one from Emergency Management, one from Finance, one item from Housing Services, one item from Land Use and Transportation, one item from Human Resources, and one item from Assessment and Taxation. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding today's consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda, the 28 items minus item 24, which will be heard separately by us.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Or raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Excuse me, five to zero. Next, we're going to move to proclamations. I'd like to invite Ms. Latricia Tillman up to the table. Today, we are going to be proclaiming Juneteenth on June 19th, 2023. Ms. Tillman.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners.
Oh, and you have some team members joining you today. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Latricia Tillman, and I am pleased to serve as your Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. I'm happy to be here to offer a few introductory remarks on our Cultural Heritage celebrations before I turn it over to John Williams, Superintendent of Facilities, and Ray Cameron, our Director of Juvenile Services, to read the Washington County 2023 Juneteenth Proclamation. Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and Resource Pages are an important starting point for our collective organizational engagement and learning about equity, diversity, and inclusion. The Juneteenth celebrations we are enjoying have been planned and organized by about 10 staff who volunteer to support our learning in addition to their official work and in partnership with Clean Water Services and Pacific University. These cultural celebrations offer an opportunity to enter into and strengthen relationships with staff and community who recognize the importance of Juneteenth, to build trust and deepen our understanding of these diverse and growing communities within Washington County. Juneteenth, short for June 19th, is known by many names: Black Independence Day, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, and many others. This holiday commemorates the effective end of slavery in the United States. Though President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, it took more than two years for news of emancipation to reach Galveston, Texas. The celebration also creates an opportunity to learn about historic and present oppression of the Black, African, and African-American communities and the community's resilience in the face of that oppression, so that we can all reflect on whether or not our current policies and sentiments support the well-being of the Black, African, and African-American community and dismantle racism and white supremacy. The Black community, like all other cultures, is not monolithic. It encompasses a range of diverse life experiences and opinions. Consequently, the celebrations and resource pages may not present a comprehensive picture of the nuances or full range of opinions within any culture or subculture. However, the staff who participate in the Heritage Month committees are very thoughtful about the learning opportunities they share with our Washington County community. So, we encourage people who may be curious about what is or is not presented or the policy implications of what is shared this month to reach out to us at the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, or open a dialogue with colleagues or the Planning Committee members. And we invite individuals to join us in the celebration of Juneteenth with the following observances and events. So, from today until June 20th, Washington County will raise the Juneteenth flag embodying unity, pride, and solidarity. This celebrates a symbolic representation of our shared values. On Saturday, June 17th, Washington County will come together with esteemed partners such as the Black Advisory Business Council, Big Brothers and Sisters, Intel Corporation, Northwest Natural, PGE, City of Hillsborough, and many more, to host the Washington County Juneteenth Community Celebration, which will be held at Jerry Willey Plaza, providing a a focal point for the event. This gathering presents an incredible opportunity for our community to unite, rejoice, and pay homage to Juneteenth while honoring the profound resilience, cultural heritage, and invaluable contributions of the Black community. So we invite you all to stop by the Washington County table to see your Juneteenth Committee volunteers in action. And with that, I want to thank all the members of the Juneteenth Committee who met over the past few weeks utilizing a shared leadership model to bring the proclamation to you today and the events that we will be celebrating in the days to come. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Williams and Ray Cameron to read the Washington County 2023 Juneteenth Proclamation.
Thank you, Latricia. Thank you so much. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Good morning, community. And it's a very distinct honor to read this proclamation in honor of Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is often referred to as our country's Second Independence Day and has long been celebrated among African-Americans' community, its historical significance has largely been omitted from educational curricula, making it relatively unknown to the wider population. And whereas despite the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1, 1863, and passage of the 13th Amendment by the U.S. Congress, more than 250,000 enslaved Africans and their descendants remain in bondage in the state of Texas until the arrival of Union troops at Galveston on the 19th day of June 1865. And whereas, when the news of the emancipation spread following the reading of General Order Number Three by Major General Gordon Granger and the formerly enslaved people of Texas reacted with joyous celebrations, launching what would become an annual event known as Juneteenth. And whereas, early celebrations of Juneteenth consisted of family and community gatherings filled not only with special food and festivities, but also prayer, reflection, and respect for ancestors who suffered under slavery. And whereas, the observance of Juneteenth evolved over time, leading up to January 1, 1980, when Texas became the first state in the nation to formally establish Juneteenth as an official holiday. Thanks to the tireless efforts of the late former State Representative Al Edwards, who served for more than 30 years in the Texas State Legislature. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrations continue to grow within communities and organizations throughout the country, helping to promote knowledge and appreciation of African-American history, resilience, family, community, and culture. And whereas, we honor the legacy of those who first received the news on that unforgettable day in Galveston, and understand the joy reflected in the celebration of Juneteenth provides itself and a buffer against the generational trauma of slavery and widespread systemic racism that limits Black prosperity and health to this day. And—
Whereas, we do pledge to continue our efforts to lift up the importance and history of Juneteenth and work tirelessly to root out institutional racism wherever it exists and advance equity and inclusion for all members of our community. And whereas, the Juneteenth National Independence Act 415-14 created for the people of the United States to acknowledge and celebrate the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of Black Americans, and coming together to eradicating system racism that still undermines our founding ideals and collective prosperity. And whereas, the Juneteenth flag created by the National Juneteenth Celebration Foundation is a representative of a new freedom, a new people, a new star. The symbol of the star and colors of red, blue, and white draw their inspiration from the birthplace of the holiday, Galveston, Texas, and the American flag. The arc that extends across the width of flag represents a new horizon, the opportunities and the promises that lay ahead for descendants of American slavery. And whereas, Oregonians are increasingly learning about celebrating Juneteenth individually and collectively by hosting and attending events being held in cities and countries across the state. And whereas, Washington County displays flags that underscore our values as a county. This year, we will fly the Juneteenth flag from June 13 to the 21st in recognition of the holiday. Whereas, the Washington County Board of Commissioners voted in favor to approve the resolution and ordered to amend the Washington County personnel rules and regulations on November 30, 2022, to recognize June 13 as a paid county holiday. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, Juneteenth, and calls upon the people of Washington County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and reflections to continue our efforts to create a world that is more equitable and prosperous for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman.
With that, Madam Chair, we turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
The three of you for bringing this to life for us today. Don't leave yet. We still need to take action. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or motions?
I just have a quick comment to say the month of June keeps getting better and better. June is Pride Month, which is my favorite, and then now we have Juneteenth. So, great presentations, and I celebrate with you in spirit, and I celebrate the content that you present today.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the history in that proclamation. That's very refreshing, and it also—it's a reminder every year and every time we hear that proclamation, so thank you for that.
Well done, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I will make a second invitation for a motion to move forward with proclaiming June 19, 2023, to be Juneteenth in Washington County.
So moved, Chair Harrington.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Commissioners. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. And thank you again for bringing this to life for us.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be moving on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have just one item, a proposal to appoint John Sato, Donald Scott, and Dulce Ojada as new members to the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council, and to reappoint Catherine "Katie" Moran to the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council, all with terms ending February 28, 2026. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding these appointments?
I moved.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. Today, we have a proposal to legalize a portion of Northwest Harrington Road as County Road 3341. And we have a staff presentation from Stacy Shuttler, our traffic engineer, transportation engineer here in Washington County. Stacy, please take it away.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Members of the board, I'm Stacy Shuttler. I'm the county engineer at Washington County's Land Use and Transportation. After the short staff report and the clicker, I will request that your board conduct a public hearing, then legalize a portion of Harrington Road. So Harrington Road is located southwest of North Plains. The road is maintained by Washington County, and the portion on the map there in the dashed green line, that's the part that's uncertain right now. Legalization is proposed to set the record for the location of the public road. Harrington Road— Harrington Road has been traveled in its current location for over 100 years, and that's based on the county maintenance records, surveys, and fences in the area. The road qualifies for legalization because the original survey notes are missing. The entire road could be legalized with a 60-foot width, but 40-foot is recommended, and that's based on a partition plot that the county accepted in 1994, which clearly made a 40-foot dedication in that area. And finally, there's no permanent structures located in the proposed right-of-way. So this map shows the partition plot on the right. It was split with the 40-foot wide dedication. The rest to the west is the 60-foot, and that's what's being proposed today, and that's what matches the current county assessment maps. So if and when there's development in the future, then additional dedication would be required at that time per the transportation system plan. So adjacent property owners were notified of today's public hearing. There's no known opposition to the proposed legalization, but at today's public hearing, you may hear additional testimony or input to consider. So based on this information presented, I ask your board to conduct the public hearing and then approve the legalization. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we have a public hearing? Oh, heavens, no. Commissioner Rogers was pointing out, this is not my road. It was not named after me nor anyone in my known family. And as our worksheet articulates, this step is needed when there is doubt or uncertainty as to the legal location of the road. The public has been traveling Northwest Harrington Road in its current location for over 150 years. So, we have no Commissioner questions, so with that, I will open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to this matter?
So is anyone in our auditorium here wish to provide public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes on this roadway? Give you just a moment to raise hand or start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any members viewing this meeting via Zoom like to provide public hearing comments on this public hearing? As you heard the presentation, I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will close today's public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the resolution and order legalizing Northwest Harrington Road as County Road 3341?
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next—excuse me—we'll move to our next item. This is a proposal to approve the bid award and authorize execution of the contract for the supply and construction of palletized shelters. I believe we have a staff report for this item. Clerk Moss?
Yes, we do, and Jess Larson should be coming on screen momentarily for you.
Hello, Jess. We can see you. Can we hear you?
I hope so. Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, we can, just fine.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Board members. For the record, my name is Jess Larson. I'm your Assistant Director in the Department of Homeless Services overseeing—oh, sorry, in the Department of Housing Services overseeing our Homeless Services Division. And we have a brief presentation here to frame up this agenda item before you today. Next slide, please. So, to put it as simply as possible, this item is to approve the bid award to authorize the execution of a contract to purchase 60 climate-controlled pallet homes and two hygiene units. This is to provide needed infrastructure to build out our sheltering capacity across the county over the next several years, as we use temporary shelter pod programs as a temporary addition to our shelter capacity across Washington County. So it's simply the act of approving the purchase of those 60 climate-controlled pods and the two hygiene units. And there is a staff plan to place the first 30 of these pods at a particular location in the ALOA neighborhood, and a potential plan for the second 30 pods, but that is still a potentiality. And as—again, the pods will be kind of rotating in use across the county over the next several years as locations are identified to fill in our shelter system. So my next slide is just to provide a little bit of context about how we go about creating this shelter siting process, and also the engagement process when each new shelter program is identified. This is not pertaining to the item in front of your—for your consideration today, but is just to provide a little bit of extra context. So first, when siting shelter, we have current state-enabling legislation that essentially allows for the supersiting of shelter locations, because there's such an urgent need to create places for people who are unsheltered in our communities to be able to go. And second, as you recall, the board reviewed our work as staff and with community in creating the Washington County Community Guidelines for Expanding Shelter Programs in 2021, and that that set of guidelines has been used by staff to be able to consider potential locations and move them forward for actual programming if they are consistent with those guidelines. And also, in that community-created document is clarity about the community engagement process that staff goes through if and when a site becomes a definite location for future shelter. So to be clear, the staff are not currently engaged—conducting community engagement around the question of should a shelter program be located here. We only conduct community engagement when a shelter—when the site has been identified as a very likely or planned shelter program. And that is the work that is beginning in two communities at this time. Next slide. So quickly, though, on the sites of our shelters, we want to reference this map here, which demonstrates the diversity of locations and types across—types of shelter in use and currently planned in the county. We have congregate sites, motel-based shelters or non-congregate sites, and we are also adding in these temporary pod shelters as an alternative shelter model, again, to help fill in needed capacity for shelter until a couple permanent shelter locations come online in Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Tigard. So that's the full view of our current shelter capacity and currently planned shelter capacity. You can see those future sites highlighted where we are working to bring new shelter programs online across the county. And two of those are the sites where we are looking at a specific program designed around shelter pods. Next slide, please. So a little bit about that engagement. Once a site is identified, and that is the first step, and it's not—it's a long process using those guidelines, technical consideration of the sites, looking at our shelter capacity across the county to make sure we have sufficient capacity and diverse capacity across the county, and many other technical steps. Oftentimes, it's many months of work internally and with potential landlords, community partners, to, again, determine a site is suitable and prepare it for a shelter program. Once that site is determined suitable, then we immediately notify the neighbors. This can be a combination of approaches, sending postcards that provide the information of the upcoming shelter program, and community engagement to discuss that program. We also do door-knocking or canvassing of the neighbors in the immediate area surrounding that future shelter program. We begin the community engagement through a couple of steps. First, an informational session to clear up confusion, provide specifics around the partnerships involved in the project, expectations of participation or shelter participants, like the code of conduct, and other specifics about the program, like 24-hour staffing and security, restrictions around camping outside of the program, and other details to hopefully clear up some of the immediate concerns and confusion neighbors might have, having just learned about the coming shelter program. Then we move into a second phase, which is a little bit more interactive of a workshop, and we break out the room into several different issue areas where we have subject matter experts from like the program provider, the operator of the shelter, we'll bring law enforcement, other partners to work on the different issues that we know are key and—of key concern to area neighbors, and hopefully further address those issues through clarity and information, but also work to—I— information, but also work to identify opportunities to tailor the program to mitigate some of those concerns, like the location of a bus stop that's currently in place for schoolchildren, for example. That might be an issue that we want to work on with the neighbors and with the school district to figure out how we can mitigate the concern about that's location and proximity to the shelter entrance, for example. So that workshop is a place for problem solving in partnership with community. And us as the county, in partnership with the landowner and the future shelter operator, starting to develop a neighborhood plan, a list of commitments and agreements that we will put forward into our programming and practices and operations of the shelter to ensure that we are mitigating those concerns as best as possible and maintaining communication with the neighborhood. Then our third interaction or engagement with the community will be a follow-up with that draft neighborhood plan to see if we've accurately corrected or collected those concerns and put forward reasonable approaches to address those concerns. This will be a, again, a follow-up, a discussion with the community, working towards our final proposal of that neighborhood plan to provide certainty and clarity and communication around some of those livability concerns we are hearing. Then the shelter program will open, and we will again notify neighbors of that final neighborhood plan that they will have access to. And then also the, the opening of the shelter, that it has indeed begun programming. And then there is a fifth step in our engagement, a kind of a check back. How are we doing? How has the shelter program actually begun to operate? Are some of these concerns being resolved? Are they persisting? Should we look at that neighborhood plan again together and address some of those concerns? So that's the roadmap for our engagement work in alignment with the staff work of beginning and preparing for the technical elements of opening that shelter program. Next slide, please. So in the two current, currently planned shelter programs, here are just some key dates for the public's awareness and for the board's awareness. We have a, a series, a continued series of engagement in Aloha with the community, where we have an in-person workshop event on schedule for June 26 in the evening, and then that follow-up neighborhood plan review meeting on the July 17. And in Cornelius, we will be watching initiating our engagement on June 28 with a virtual listening session and, and listening session and, and also an information session, followed by the in-person workshop to begin the neighborhood plan work on July 11. And then for more information, I think that's the last slide here for your awareness today. Next slide, please, is updated information on the website. Here are some long URLs, but no need to worry about that. You can simply type in shelters in the, the search bar in our county website and find all of this information, including that map, the engagement process, lots of FAQs around community, questions around how do we go through this process as staff and as Washington County? What are the processes for working through some of those neighborhood concerns and how to get involved in all of these, these two community conversations that are getting underway? So I think that's the conclusion of this brief staff report. But again, the item before your consideration today is simply the action to purchase those 60 pods and two hygiene units so that we can continue forward in the direction of creating this shelter capacity that's needed in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. I appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions on today's item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the bid award and authorize the execution of contract for the supplying construction of palletized shelters?
Chair Harrington, I just want to make a comment, and also I'd like to make the motion as well.
Yes.
My comment is to the constituents that came this morning and share their concerns and fears with us. I want you to know I heard you, and I appreciate your taking the time to come to us and share your experience. What I really appreciate today is we also did hear compared to the last time we've had this discussion or this agenda item in front of us. We did hear sort of a balanced experience or balanced approach or balanced support or opposition. So I, I want you to know that there's two sides to every story, and I appreciate everyone that took the time. I want you to know my commitments to you all, especially of folks who are concerned about this. My commitments remain the same as I made last time, as will my vote today as well. But we'll keep working together and we'll keep addressing and the questions that Dylan, you raised. They're on record, and we'll keep pushing for answers. So I make the motion to.
Ladies and gentlemen, please maintain decorum. Commissioner Fied just made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Yeah, for discussion. I don't know, Jerry, did you have, did I jump in front of you?
No, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. I thought, I saw you move. Yeah, to me, being, trying to listen to this carefully and on balance, see what we're doing, it's unfortunate, the messaging that was going out because, as I mentioned in work session, this was for the purchase of pods that could go anywhere. We know we need them, and that's seemingly a pretty easy decision to make. I think what got confused, and I still think it's confused, is that there wasn't a good dialogue with the community as to, it would disaggregate the two topics. And that was because the commitment said, we're going to deliver it. We just had, heard a staff report again that said they forwarded 30 units for that site. I don't know if it's the best site or not. I don't live there. I don't represent that particular area. I represent the county in general, but not that area. I'm listening to the commissioner carefully, who does, and she's saying she supports. So that might be the best. I, I'm choking hard. If I had my druthers, we wouldn't be here. We would be simply buying pods to go somewhere and sites that be yet determined. But I can't find on balance a problem with supporting the purchase of pods will go somewhere. I just hate to see them keep saying, it's going to be that site, it's going to be that site. May not be the only site. So that's my comments.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Thank you, Chair. As I said at the last meeting, homelessness is one of the very biggest issues that we face. It's a very difficult issue. There's no question about it. I, I want to express my appreciation to the faith community for how many, in how many areas they have stepped forward, and I want to express my appreciation to the Aloha Methodist Church for stepping forward. This is a very difficult, very difficult issue, but I do appreciate those who are working hard to make this an issue that's behind us, not in front of us. I will be voting yes.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Nope, then I'll speak to it. As Commissioner Trese mentioned, homelessness is a very difficult problem. It is a problem across our nation, including here in Washington County, across our community. A listening session was held for the Aloha Methodist Church site, and as you saw in the presentation today, that community engagement will continue. Today's action is separate from that program of where to put the shelters. Today's action is to simply purchase these prefab units, essentially. We have tried another solution that did not include the environmental controls that these pod shelter solutions do provide. And I think it's very important that we learn from that and continue to put our resources towards what is required to be humane for our fellow community members. I am very grateful for the voters' support for the supportive housing services measure that allows the three counties across our metropolitan region to put together the variety of programs that are needed to help our homeless community members get the help that they need. We need to meet, meet people where they are and to help them overcome whatever issues they may have with trust or other services needs. And so this pod purchase is just one small piece in the puzzle of solutions that we're putting together. I also want to express my appreciation for all of our staff members, all of the community groups and faith organizations that are helping us address the needs of our community members. And it isn't isolated to just homelessness. We have community members across Washington County that are also providing resources to ensure that people get healthy food to eat as well as other life-improving skills and practices so that everyone here in Washington County has the opportunity to thrive. This is difficult work. Our staff and our community partners are doing this work day in and day out, and I am very grateful for them and will continue to support them in meeting our community members' needs. Thank you to the 16 of you who testified before us today. Thank you to the hundreds of people who have sent us emails and letters, who have attended the listening sessions and come to other community engagement meetings with regard to this program to address homelessness. I appreciate it, and I will be supporting this effort. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the bid award to authorize the execution of the contract for the supply and construction of palletized shelters, please vote by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. That brings us to our second public communications section for the meeting, and this is an opportunity for members of our community to address the commission for up to five minutes apiece. Clerk Moss, who do we have signed up?
First, Madam Chair, we have Terry Wagner and Melissa Laird.
I'm here on behalf of the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District Advisory Committee. I am the chair. With me here today is Terry Wagner and Bruce Bartlett, who are also advisory committee members. Just as an education and introduction for everybody, the ESPD Advisory Committee is composed of 17 community members. Currently, we have one vacancy. We reside throughout the district, and its purpose of the advisory committee is to work with the sheriff and the sheriff's office officials to review policies and practices and offer recommendations regarding police services and strategic direction to best serve those in ESPD. There is a letter that Terry will be reading. It was approved by all of the advisory committee members. Thank you.
Good morning. This letter is on the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District Citizens Advisory Committee, May 2023. Chief Chair Harrington, sorry. This letter is written on behalf of the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District ESPD Advisory Committee, AC. We appreciate a viewing your 2023 Washington County State of the County address. The progress being made by housing and community development in conjunction with efforts by city, metro, and state partners to address homelessness and the housing crisis, the health and human services innovative programs such as Mental Health Response Teams, Hawthorne Walk-In Center, and the much anticipated Center for Addictions, Triage, and Treatment, CATT, opening in 2024/25, and the budgeting work to solve the county's difficult financial dilemma inspires hope. While half an hour is not enough time to cover all the services the county provides, as members of the ESPD AC, we were surprised that your Public Safety Services did not mention the sheriff's office. In fact, none of the contributions of the independently elected Washington County officials, the sheriff, the district attorney, the circuit court presiding judge, and the auditor were mentioned in this State of the County address. While this omission may have been due to a constrained timeframe, it nonetheless strikes us as a missed opportunity and leaves viewers with an incomplete view of all the essential county services and accomplishments in a yearly address. We find this especially unfortunate as public safety continues to be a top concern for Washington County. Residents and our sheriff's office is an exemplary organization which plays a key role in our high quality of life here in Washington County. We invite the chair and the other commissioners to make future addresses to county residents such as town halls and forums covering the agency's services and issues not included in the 2023 address. It would take several addresses to cover all the valuable services the county provides. Perhaps given quarterly, these addresses would help to keep county residents better informed of the scope and extent of what our tax money provides for. Sincerely, Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District Advisory Committee members who are Anna Alexander, Vice Chair, Ryan Garrick, Jeff Larson, Michael Ruzi, Bruce Bartlett, Diana Jensen, Jess Metz, Metz, thank you, John Ryan, Leroy Bentley, Ben Johnson, Jessica Miyati, Terry Wagner, Dolores Chenoweth, Melissa Laird, Chair, Ricardo Moreno, and Bob Zarowski.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that you have reassurance, we did, in fact, receive your letter previously, and it has been made available by the full board. Thank you.
Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
Right. Is there any other people in the room that wish to testify that had not already previously testified at the beginning of the meeting? Terry?
Hi, Chris Bartlett, a variety of committees and, and councils. I am looking at the future development of the county's strategic plan, and one of the elements of the strategic plan of the past that was not adhered to is that cities will be the providers of all urban services. And the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, I think, is a good working example of how the county is providing urban services to its residents, not through a traditional general fund approach, but through the special ESPD levy. So this will be a subject that we will be discussing as the strategic plan gets laid out, but the county does provide urban services, not in a traditional fashion, but as the Clean Water Service Board, you certainly are providing water and sewer urban services. So I look forward to a very robust and productive discussion on how to handle our large urban unincorporated area as we go forward. Thanks.
Right, that concludes our testimony in the room. Would any members viewing this meeting online via Zoom like to provide public comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. So we have three hands raised, Madam Chair. The first one is Kim Rice. Kim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Thank you for taking my public comment. My name is Kim Rice. Last year, I actually ran for Senate District 18, which does include Aloha as being kind of like the heart of that Senate District. I spent many days and many hours canvassing this area, actually speaking to the voters, letting them know that I was running for office and that I actually cared about the issues that were important to them. And like I said, I spent many days in this area and had many volunteers canvas with me. And And what I learned is that this is a wonderful community. These people care about their neighborhoods. They are invested in this neighborhood. They've lived there for a long time. They've raised their families. They have grandchildren there. They need to be heard at this table. Even though I did lose my Senate race, this is my backyard too. This is my community, and I care about having all voices heard. What you need to understand is that we don't disagree with the homeless people needing services and needing help. What we already know is that tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars through Metro and through our county have already been designated for this, and the problem is getting worse. I rode along with the Washington County sheriffs so that I could get an understanding of what the issues are facing our communities. And the homelessness and the drugs and the crime were the top issues. We already know from previous public comment today that there have been homeless communities in this vicinity and that we're using tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer monies to clean them up and move them along to a different area. I also don't think using this United Methodist Church property as an epicenter for 30 homeless pods is the solution. It is only going to exacerbate the problems that these community members were already facing when I was walking their neighborhoods. I want every homeowner to be considered in this. We do have compassion for the people that you call unhoused. The thing is, is the unhoused are not publicly, they're not invested in this community. They aren't because they do not own property in this community. So I am just saying, as a member of this area, I still care about the people, the voters, the constituents, the people that are actually paying the taxes. Putting this Safe Rest Village is not going to be a safe rest. I just saw an article about the Safe Rest Village that opened in North Portland, and they are already having exacerbated problems. And I just want to say, let's put the money into and into organizations that are working, like the Bybee Lakes Hope Center, like Union Gospel Mission. Putting a low barrier, 30 units on United Methodist Church is not going to be safe for our community. So as a, as a member of this community, as a taxpayer, as a parent, as an educator, as a former candidate for state office, I just say, we need to take this back to the drawing board, and we need to have this completely rethought. The fact that you bought these pods without even knowing where they're going to go is a little concerning to me as well. Let's not put the cart before the horse, people. We don't have unending, unending resources. And let's not continue to put these, these issues on our people that are already facing the high cost of housing, food, gas, and living in our county. Let's not, let's not make it worse for our constituents. Thank you for listening to my comment today, and I look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you, Kim. Next, we have Jenna Tross. Jenna, can you hear us? Can you unmute Jenna? There you go.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you get a little closer to your microphone?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for listening. I'm probably going to echo a lot of things that have already been said today. I just want to start out with saying that, you know, had the communication from the county been better planned, my background is in communications for large corporations. I understand how it works. And this communication process was awful. We, you talk about a listening session. Our latest listening session was canceled. We could have gone through and listened to many things last week about this exact subject, and the county canceled it, canceled on us. We are asking to be heard in this situation. Madam Chair, Catherine Harrington, you now actively have people working to recall you from office because they feel like they're not being heard. That is an extreme measure to feel like you have to take as a constituent because you're not being heard. It's not that we don't want to help the house's community. I personally absolutely do. I asked for high barrier, not to not have drinks with your friends or celebrations like somebody mentioned, but to not have hard fentanyl and heroin in my backyard and needles. Those are totally different things. And you can't lump them all into a black and white situation. I asked for no people with a past of sexual crime, sexual predators to be allowed in this village because I myself am a sexual assault survivor, and that frightens me. And it shouldn't be in a community with children. And that should be considered. You bought the pods today. And Mr. Rogers, I so thankfully, last time you said you shouldn't buy something without knowing where they're going to go. And I was very thankful for you standing up and putting a pause on that. And Mr. Wiley, for you doing the same and backing that up. So thank you for doing that, but it looks like today it's going forward. And I would ask that as we do this process, as you move forward, consider the community before you actually take action. We should have a community agreement before the site was even put forward. So you need to reapproach your communication plan. I want to say, like, on behalf of the neighborhood, that we are not saying not in my backyard. We are not saying that. We wanted it to go in a certain direction, to have these things talked about, considered, and put together. I'm sure there are people saying that they don't want it as well. That's absolutely true. However, that you saw today, there's a mix of emotions about everything. So what do you do? Just move forward and push it through and not hear one side of the story? Because that's how it feels right now. We feel like it's being shoved at us. And the listening sessions did not happen. We had one session, one session with the church where it completely went awry. The questions were not answered. We still have not had questions answered for Jen Larson's office. We sent 30 questions listed. The only person, the only person who took the time to chat with us and talk was Nefisa Phi. And we actually appreciate that. And she sat with us face to face, did not cut us off, did not smirk or laugh or smile when we had issues like we have seen today on camera. She listened, so we appreciate that. While she still voted for it to go forward, that, that's another thing that will need to be considered, I guess, as constituents. But I guess my point today, and I don't want to ramble, is it does feel like it's happening here. I don't understand why it hasn't been looked at in Sherwood, in Bethany, and other areas as well. Not that it shouldn't happen here, but that it needs to be shared across all of Washington County. I saw the map quickly that Jen Larson shared. It is not complete. So I would ask that we still pause and talk as a community before we decide on this moving forward. I would ask that you grant residents permits for eight-foot fences so they can feel safe because right now that's not allowed, but at least that would give us some privacy and safety for our homes. And I would ask for a high-barrier entry village where we can talk through the different stipulations of what that looks like, but no one with sexual harm backgrounds, no one with assault backgrounds, and no heavy drugs being admitted to these villages. I think that's fair in a community with children. We have three senior citizen homes two doors down from this facility or where it's proposed. So you all have a lot of work to do, and good luck, Catherine Harrington, on your recall.
Right. Thank you, Jenna. Next, we have a person as TKWC. Please give you, give us your name before you proceed there for the record.
Can you hear me? My name is Fran Warren.
Yes. Go ahead, Fran, for up to five minutes.
Yep, I just lost my thing. So, good morning, Chair Harrington and to each of you commissioners today. My name is Fran Warren. I'm a longtime, full-time volunteer dedicated to Washington County. As some of you may know already, I grew up with many months of my childhood living homeless. One of the most pivotal events of my life was when mine was reunited with my mother, and she was able to purchase a car. The very first thing we did was to drive to Yosemite National Park. And that weekend where we car camped greatly changed the direction of my life. I have great empathy for our underserved committee, community who cannot afford a car to drive to natural areas and to experience wildlife and the serenity of ponds and streams and the wildlife that depends on the significant natural resources. So let me switch over to my original testimony here. I am absolutely thrilled that Washington County is joining in on the federally supported Urban Heat Islands project on July 23rd. This project will help definitely identify the climate impacts of a lack of trees and significant natural areas in various parts of our county. We'll be able to address the environmental equity issues and to seek federal assistance in supporting the protecting the natural resource areas while providing affordable housing and economic growth. I will be throwing my full community engagement support of this project, and I have contacted Kathleen Wright to further that endeavor. I've put our 501(c)(3) Treekeepers Organization into the federal system of award management called SAM to facilitate our application for federal grants to assist the county in providing climate actions and natural resource protections. Please feel free to call upon me for any of this kind of assistance. Speaking of Urban Heat Islands, please, when you consider the locations of the proposed shelter pods, please consider the weather issues. We are forecasted to have an even hotter July and August this coming year. I recommend that these shelters are in proximity of trees for shade. Smaller living units tend to get even hotter than larger, more ventilated housing units. Of course, air conditioning is not affordable for lower-income families, so we definitely need these trees for shade along with the watering and maintenance of those trees. Even if the county needs to bring in mature trees and planter boxes, that would be better than out in the open areas where the temperatures can become unbearable. And putting pods on impervious surfaces will also increase the ambient temperature. I ask you to please consider those points. As a retired comptroller of intel, I am very sensitive to the budget constraints for the county. So I'm not here to ask for additional monies to support the protection of our natural resources, but to focus on where we might make some adjustments within the current budget, which I believe you'll be voting on later this month. As stated in my written testimony of June 1st, investment in the public participation during the early planning phases is much more cost-effective than dealing with controversy at later stages. Where, I believe that the Goal 5 Update Project may be under-resourced given that this additional direction of greater and community engagement from the Board of Directors, Board of Commissioners. LUT budget seems to be lean, and losing a GIS specialist from their FTE would also make the priority of performing the priority item, demographic, economic information, and data collection analysis more challenging to existing staff, especially if that analysis is also required in the Goal 5 Update Project. So where we get this extra funding? In current planning, Washington County can still save $500,000 by reducing the heat reflected paved pathway suggested by Chair Harrington in instructing LUT current planning to return to the original expert staff recommendation of a six-to-eight-foot standard sidewalk with the Kenny Terrace corridor. This would also save over 100 Kenny Terrace mature trees, which the immediate community currently support and maintain. Returning to the original plan would also lessen the likelihood of litigation on this project. I believe that this is one of the key areas that we could make a change on. Right now, people are doing their Tai Chi in the shade of the trees. Children are riding their bicycles, bicycles, not tricycles because I've talked to the families there, and small children will not be riding on those new paveways that we're talking about. So I'm asking you to return to the original project plan. That would be more than enough to pay for the resources for the LUT Goal 5 Update and also to allow for monies in other areas. I'm telling this now because I've run out of time. I'm always here to provide any kind of assistance for anyone.
Thank you, Fran. And Chair Harrington, the last hand we have raised is Zach Hughes. Zach, can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Thank you. Well, for probably a decent portion of the room, certainly an emotion of disappointment is probably felt this afternoon, this morning, myself included. I also look at this current vote for the acquisition of the pods as a lapse in financial due diligence on the county's part. The word that's been used a lot today is proposed. If this is a proposed site but not a secured site, there's no reason to procure the pods. If none of these sites come to fruition, what does the county do with the $800,000-plus that they have elected to spend today? It just feels like many have said, if we put the cart before the horse. My background is in construction management, and I pretty well versed in setting up temporary sites. We do it every time that we go to a greenfield and build a new project. I question heavily, specifically to the AUMC site, but as well with others, if there is somebody with a background in architecture, engineering, general contracting, assisting with homeless services and selecting these sites. AUMC does not have the infrastructure to support 30 pods and restroom facilities. These are going to be undertakings that are additional monies from the county to make this site even offerable, yet we're purchasing pods for them. I really hope that going forward, Homeless Services does what they say they're going to do and actually work with the community to make these sites and these Safe Rest Villages work, not just for the people who are not here speaking for themselves today, but for the residents of the neighborhoods that they are being brought into. In the future, maybe they do become our community members, but for now, they're not. And the community members that are here are expressing opinions on both sides of the table. And those who are against the current proposal aren't being heard. Only those who are for this got what they wanted today. I sincerely hope that, you know, Commissioner Phi, you're able to work with us going forward and have additional sit downs. And you're able to help at least those of us that I've met with you before who live in the closest vicinity to the AUMC Safe Rest Village, work with homeless services to get the Good Neighbor Agreement and the site planning, all part of the contract with the site operator. Anybody who has any background in contracting knows that a contract without these types of exhibits within the contract mean absolutely nothing. Not sure I have anything else. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Madam Chair, that concludes the public signups for today.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to board announcements. Our next meeting set will be held on Tuesday, June 20th. Our work session will start at 9:00 a.m., and then we'll reconvene that later in the day. At 10 o'clock, we'll start the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. And our Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting will immediately follow that meeting, perhaps as early as 10:00 a.m. At that meeting, it will also include the final budget hearing and a proposal to adopt the Washington County Budget Service District for Lighting budget, the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District budget, and the North Bethany Service District for Roads budget. And which one am I missing? Yes. Okay, I think I got them all. Yep. The following Tuesday, Tuesday, June 27th, we'll start our work session in the afternoon, and our board meeting starts at 6:30 p.m. We will be taking Tuesday, July 4th off and not have any Board of Commissioner group meetings that week. Subsequently, on Tuesday, June 11th, we'll we'll be just a work session day starting at 9:00 a.m. On Thursday, July 13th, we'll be holding our monthly Board of Commissioners roundtable, starting at 9:00. On Friday, July 14th, we're having a special meeting with the other counties that make up our Council of Forest Trust Lands Counties Region. That includes the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, and the Washington County Board of Commissioners. This is a meeting being held jointly to include the Oregon Department of Forestry to make an updated presentation on various forestry plans, the Habitat Conservation Plan, Forest Management Plan, that are going before the Oregon Board of Forestry for action in the coming months. On Tuesday, July 18th, we'll have a work session that starts at 9:00, then reconvenes in the afternoon. Our board meeting will start at 10:00 a.m. And the last meeting for the month of July will be Tuesday, July 25th. We'll have a work session that starts at 2:00 in the afternoon and a board meeting at 6:30 in the evening. So whether we like it or not, the month of June has been flying by, and July proves to be busy, but we do hope that everyone will have a joyous summer holiday season in July and August. Are there any other commissioner announcements for today? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn today's meeting of Tuesday, June 13th?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning today's meeting, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. We are hereby adjourned. And we will close for our one-hour lunch session and reconvene at 1:17. Our Metro Council team for our presentation as item two, they will not be here to present the Supportive Housing Services Oversight Committee Annual Report today. So we will pick back up on items three, four, five, and six. Thank you, commissioners.